It's time we said, uh, we'd start today's forum, so, um, just to start off with, uh, thank you everybody for coming out today. I'm actually pleasantly surprised at the turnout we've had, considering the weather. Dwayne McCarty, who is on the ballot for city council, won't be able to be here today. Uh, he's on duty because of the weather. But I will be following up with him tomorrow to have a sideboard to go in with coverage of the forum in the, uh, in the Marion County record. To start off with, uh, why don't we start from the near end of the stage to me and have the candidates introduce themselves?
Todd Heitzschmidt, currently serving on city council, and I'm branch president here at Central National Bank.
I'm Mary Olson, and I'm currently the mayor of Marion, and I am retired, and I'm working to barely make it up once in a while, but that's mainly what I get done.
I'm Steve Unruh. I am a concerned citizen, and I'm out here to get people motivated, to get people to work for the common goal.
David Mayfield, uh, I'm past city administrator for the city of Marion. I've held that position for eight years, and, uh, the reason I'm running today is to assist the city in making some, uh, good decisions, and I have a lot of experience towards that, and I hope to contribute to that towards, uh, towards the city and our citizens.
Hi, I'm Melissa Rivas. I'm currently a registered nurse at St. Luke Hospital. Um, I'm running just, um, I guess to become, um, more involved here as the city of Marion, and, uh, to be involved, um, to see that Marion moves forward.
Jerry Klein, I'm currently on the council, and, uh, I live in Marion. I'm retired, and, uh, I'm running because, uh, I want to keep government fair and honest.
Chad Atkins, and I am a teacher and a coach here at USD 408. Um, lived here for 15 years, and I'm running for city council because this is where we have chosen to call our home, and I would like to see, uh, Marion continue to move forward and just provide a place for citizens of all ages to live and be able to prosper. So, that's my goal.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, a final reminder before we get to the question and answer portion. We have Tina Unruh from the county clerk's office here. She has vote registration forms for anybody who needs to register for the election. We have a box, uh, in the back with a notepad and a pen, in case anybody wants to write down a question of your own, your candidates, and we have coffee and cookies in the back. Okay, uh, this time we'll start with Mary Olson, um, and continue down the line, and then return to Todd at the end of the line. Um, the first question for today is, what role should the city government play in economic development?
The role that we have, that I have presently been, uh, well, what should I say, trying to get across is that we, as a city, provide your, your infrastructure with the safety and those types of things and utilities for the economic development of this, of this city, but I'm also very involved with the, uh, chamber and getting them involved with the economic director, uh, which we do hire. And as that being said, we do, uh, hire this, a economic director this time, so the city has taken quite a bit of interest in that particular department, and I'm well behind that particular person.
I can agree with most everything that Mayor Olson has said. What we do need to worry about, we're putting too much pressure on city government. The city government can't do anything without the support of the citizens of the city. Uh, the city government at this time is working towards our economic growth, but it's up to us. We have to be willing to change and adapt and do the things necessary to have the economic development. Probably not pleasant, probably not cheap, but we have to do it, and it should come more from the citizens than from the city government.
Well, I think we all realize that economic development is necessary to evil, and we have to have the infrastructure in place in order to, uh, expand on that, and we've got that with the business park and industrial park. Unfortunately, when all that was built, the, uh, we had an economic downturn, and there really wasn't any business that was willing to relocate. Uh, there wasn't any funds available for new businesses to start up, and I think we've kind of got over that now, so now we can kind of look towards the future of how we can, uh, how, how we can, uh, expand on that. One of the, one of the things that I would like for the council to consider, and this is, uh, just my opinion, I've, I've looked at Harvey County, and if any of you are familiar with it, uh, you realize that Harvey County has a very unique economic development program going, whereas all of the cities in that county contribute to economic development. They contribute a certain amount of funds, including the county. And of all of those cities, depending upon their size and how much they can contribute, uh, it would be a sliding scale. A smaller city, for example, like Pinewood, it would contribute as much as Marion to that, uh, to that entity. Each city would also have voting rights on who they're going to hire and how that person's going to offer rent on it, and, for example, if Marion and Hillsborough and the county would probably contribute the majority of the funds towards this, uh, situation, then we would probably have more voting rights. We may have two people as opposed to them having one, but this way it would be fair to pretty much everybody. You've got to have, uh, certain infrastructure available to entities that want to come in. For example, they may need railroad. Well, railroad runs through every town in this, in, uh, in the county, but this person could take all of our information, and if they have a company contact them, then they could say, okay, I have these two cities or these four cities that meet your requirements of what you need to come, and then we could put together a package for all, you know, for that company to come in. Uh, I don't know that this would be agreeable to everybody, I mean, you know, we would all have to agree to it, everybody across the county, all of the cities, and our city councils, so that's something I'd like to put on the table with our council and discuss with them, and maybe something we could do in the future.
I think, um, economic development, um, as we look about, or as we look, um, for Marion County, uh, Marion to, um, to grow in the future, I think this is an important, a very important part, and I think most people will agree with that. Um, the economic development, I think, while it's its own separate entity, um, I think that the city government needs to be involved in it. I think it needs to be, um, a collaborative effort. Um, we need to have input, um, and we need to be involved in the decisions that they make.
Okay, I'm going to kind of stick with the question. The question says, what role should city government play in economic development? And if I can read one right here, that's going to be something interesting. Uh, first, we need to furnish a director, uh, whose job is to look for grants and new businesses, and, uh, also, if I can read here, the, the city has a responsibility of providing money and maybe ground for new businesses. Uh, yeah, we have industrial park, but we still have, you know, they have to have the ground. Uh, what about tax incentives? Uh, maybe provide money for, uh, like rent or, uh, low interest, you know? Some need be, have money, and that's a big important, what the city needs to do. Uh, okay, what about, uh, what about keeping the cost low so some might afford to come in? And, uh, I think that'd be on there to put on that chair.
City's role in economic development, obviously, as you've heard everybody else say, economic development for a town is important. For a town the size of Marion, it's really important. The city has a role, and, and it is to provide the opportunity for business to come here in things like the industrial park, um, incentives, whatever it is that the city decides. The thing I think is most important about the city's role and economic development combined is, I think the city has to have a plan on where they want to go in the future, what they want here, what you want to work to draw here, um, and jobs are important in a time like this right now. We need jobs, um, and I think that's got to be a big part of it. And along with that, within with, it's going to, you're going to hear me say this in some of these other questions, the citizens in this town have to be involved in this process by voting, by being a part of making the plan, um, and just deciding where it is we want to be. I think some people have an idea, and I think it differs depending on different groups that you talk to, but, um, economic development is, is important in, in the city. Government has to have a role in that, and just a supportive role in hiring a director that is going out and somebody I heard mention, the grants and the things to move forward. So, um, that would be my opinion.
I happen to, uh, be the chairman of our economic development group here in town, which we do have representatives from our major organizations, the hospital, of course we have several from the city, uh, school district and that, and it is working together, and I heard that from the candidates that are here. We're trying to do that, but the, uh, looking at the exact city role is that we've, we've made commitments in the past, and the businesses, and the, uh, one of those is the business park and industrial park. And I think Dave mentioned, when that happened, Economic Times kind of turned backwards on us, and that's part of it, but we also failed to make a commitment to get that ground into private hands, to improve the economy here, to get more jobs here, to improve the tax base. We need an economic developer to do that and spend the time to do that, to get that ground out of city hands and into the hands of those that can create jobs and improve our tax base. The other role that the city has, and this is important when it comes to appointments, is that we adopted, I think in the late 90s, a set of ordinance that, ordinances that have to do with these properties. I think we missed the mark when we used the city of Alathas ordinances for setting some of this stuff up. We know what we need here, and we can, and we need to adjust that. We've had folks, we've had companies look at coming to this town, and when they looked at those ordinances or what we have for regulation here and decided not to come, well, they didn't even give us an opportunity to address that. So I think it's important for the city to take care of the business that we take care of, is are we setting, uh, the goals to allow businesses to come in here as easy as possible and at least give us a chance before they look at a copy of our ordinances and say, well, we're not going to come there. So, uh, I think that's something that we can do immediately, that's something the planning commission is working, working on, and that's something that we need to do, make it as easy as possible. Let's be realistic, we're competing with the Hillsbournes and the Wichitas and every state and every city in this country. How's this going to work? It's going to be homegrown. There's more success stories about trying to help those, uh, that want to live here in Marion. It's very difficult to attract business here where there's no tie, family tie, some type of tie to Marion County, uh, or, or the area. The city, we can do what we can, but we, and like several have already said, uh, most of you have lived here, raised children here, and what did we do? We sent them off somewhere else. We didn't give them an opportunity. Hopefully, we can start doing that. Hopefully, some of your kids will want to come back here and raise their children here, and it's our job to make it as easy as possible, because this is a great place.
All right, uh, the next question, and this will start with Steve, um, is what should be the relationship between the mayor, city council, and administrator?
My way of thinking, the mayor's job is more of a coordinator. City council is made up of boards, uh, each city council one is supposed to be taking into account the needs of his constituents or our constituents. Um, there should be differences when they come to city council meetings. The mayor is the one who's supposed to find the middle ground, who's supposed to find a way to get everybody to work together, even if we don't agree, as long as we have that common goal. I've done this a few times on a, on a little smaller scale than the city, uh, but I know how to fix things. I know how to make things work. When everybody says that, well, that used to be the way it was here, that's one of the reasons I came back here. We've gotten into politics, uh, it plays a big role even right here in this little city. Uh, there should not be any politics. There should be one goal, let's make Marion grow, and the mayor should be the hardest working one towards that.
In my opinion, the relationship between the council and Marion administration should be based on trust. I truly believe that in the past, that hasn't been the case. I know there's been some issues of micromanagement between the, some of the council in the past in the mayor's office and administrator. I truly believe that if we have an administrator and we've hired a professional to do that job, then we should allow that individual to do their job on a day-to-day basis. The council's position and their role should be to make intelligent decisions that would benefit all the citizens or the majority of the citizens of Marion, not just a few, and we should continue to, uh, look towards our goals in the future of what we need to do and not just a few, just for the benefit of the few people. So, in my opinion, uh, I, I think that, uh, the council's role is to look at the overall picture of what's going on. Uh, we should be given our information and make intelligent decisions based on that information, but again, the day-to-day operations need to be led through our supervisors out there and also our city administrator.
When it comes to the, um, the mayor, the city council, and the administrator, um, I just think it needs to be a group effort, um, with the citizens in line, um, everybody needs to come together and make the, the best decisions for, um, what this town needs for the citizens.
Okay, the, I agree, and we should do our best to get along the best there by, but the, the question is the relationship between the mayor, city council, uh, and administrator. The mayor, in our setup of government, is run the meeting, and they have one vote, sure, and they're also the spokesman for the city. I mean, that goes along with the two. And the council makes the decisions, and, uh, I mean, they bring in, the administrator brings them to us, and we make the decisions of yes or no, and that's my idea of it.
City council and the mayor work, should work together, um, the mayor being the spokesman, gathering their input together, representing the citizens who voted them into office to make the important decisions for the city. I totally agree with, on the fact that the city administrator and other department heads, whatever those may be, if we hire those people, we need to hire people that we think are the best person for the job. If we don't think we have those people in place, then I think it's the job of the council to represent the citizens to make sure that that, that those people are the best people, and I would, you know, trust that the city administrator is giving you the information that they have when they gather for their job, and just to make sure that we're supporting the decisions that they're making, um, and allowing them to do their job. I agree that it's not necessarily the city council's position to micromanage people that we've hired to do a specific job.
Well, in recent history, we've had, I think, two mayoral elections that were all about trying to get rid of one of our candidates that was sitting at here at the table. That kind of bothered me. That's not what this is about. Not everybody knows, we're one of two cities in the entire state, uh, that has this form of government. We're not a board government, we're not a commission government, we're all at-large members. Mayor serves on the council and has an equal vote. I agree with what the other ones have said, that person needs to be the leader, that is, the one that runs the meeting when they're there. We also have a vice mayor that runs meetings when the mayor is not there. The mayor should provide the leadership for the town, and for the council, uh, be at the events that need to be attended and providing that leadership, but when it comes to it, the, the city council sets the overall goals for the city. That's, that's what we were elected to do, and then it's very simple, we hired an administrator to carry those things out. Some are retired, some aren't. I, I have a job, I can't micromanage the city. If that's the case, we don't need a city administrator, and I would not intend to, uh, to do that, but there are distinct roles, and the city council has the job of looking at, taking care of, of course, immediate needs, but looking towards the future, and the city administrator carries those out. It, it shouldn't be very difficult.
I agree with most of the things that have been said. We do have a type of government, the mayor council government, which makes it a little bit unique as, as Todd has brought out, and we do need to work as a team, of course, and that team is not only just with the council, it incorporates the whole city, and that's what I've been trying to do, is get the involvement of the people besides the council, and in order to do that, you're going to have to play your part as well. And I've tried to do that into involving people on the various boards that we have had for the community. They're, they are advisory boards, and we have to look at them as that kind of thing, you, but we take your advice. At least I come out and I will listen to you, and I'll bring it back to the council, but as you know, there's only two of us, and maybe you don't know, uh, we have a law that, that is called a COMA law, that means the open meetings, and if we get three people of this council together and act as, uh, business of the, of the meeting, or as a business of the city, we would be in violation of that particular, and then get penalized pretty well. So, in that regard, we have to look forward to our city administrator to keep us informed of everything that we're going to be doing in the future, and he's been doing that, and then laying that down, we get the people involved to hear what they have to say on those particular things, and then do that planning, as we said. Comprehensive planning is not easy. I gave the job of comprehensive planning for the first board that I planned, the planning and zoning, uh, reviewing that, because it had not been done, and that has to be done every five years, or you don't get, get the people involved as much as you should, because those are taking a hearing. We had 75 people here when they, when they had that first one, and now we're going to get another big meeting, I hope, because the city administrator and I have been using that particular type of, of strategy, we're going to try to get some people involved in our budget, so that you will, will know a little bit more about that budget. Maybe you won't know the various, the details of how we're going to spend that, because that's the job of our people that we've hired, and we have to trust that in order to do that. So we have to work as a team, and that involves you very well. Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to our next question, uh, we will, uh, start with, let's see. I'm sorry, I lost track of where.
Dave.
David, okay. All right, uh, starting with David, um, the question is, what should the council focus on when it sets the budget?
Well, I, I think the focus, uh, has to be taking care of the current infrastructure that we have in the city. You've got to make sure that we have the funds to, uh, continue our safety, uh, with our police departments and our fire departments, uh, street, water, sewer, electric, refuse. We've got to make sure that we have the funds available for them to continue on. I mean, if your electricity goes off, you're sure going to want it back on in a hurry. Same way with water, same way with sewer, uh, if, uh, with the refuse, uh, you're going to want the police department to show up when they, when they need to be there, so that's your first, that's your first step. You've got to take care of that. Then, uh, after, after you've got that taken care of, then you need to look at the funds that are budgeted, uh, the revenue coming in, that's your, your budget. If you look at last year's budget, you see how much revenue that came in, and you, you kind of work your budget off of, off of those numbers. Uh, maybe more, maybe less, the, the year that you're doing it. The problem with a budget is, you have to start preparing it along about April. You've got to have it in the state by August, and then you've got January 1st, 2015 comes along, and gas prices go through the roof, and, and water prices, you know, the price of water, making water goes through the roof. So, you, you need to look at a plan where you can have additional funds to do other things outside of the, of that infrastructure, but January 1st, if those prices all go up, you may have to utilize those funds. I, I firmly believe in a five, 10-year, 15-year plan, and in that plan, you put down, what do you want to do in five years? Where do you want to be in 10 years? What do you want to do in 15 years? We all looking at our water plant, you know? When we first, uh, upgraded that water plant, we put it on 40-year note. Is that not going to be in, uh, operating? Is it going to be operating in 40 years? I, I don't think so. We're going to have to put some funds back to upgrade that water plant again. Same way with the electrical. We're going to have to upgrade the electric, we're going to have to upgrade the sewer. Uh, we've all just seen what we've done down the Hudson dish with the sewer, so we're planning ahead on that, but I guarantee you, there's some other parts of the city that's going to need some new sewer in 40 years. So, we just need to plan down the road, and if, if at all possible, we take the excess funds that we have in the budget, and we put them back where we're going to go.
Not quite sure, um, how a city currently, um, does its budget. Kind of like Dave mentioned, I think that we need to focus most on the operations of the city, um, that needs to come first. Secondly, which this kind of ties into the, the next question that we're going to be going over, but I think we need to do what we can to, um, keep costs down for the citizens, um, which, when we're looking at that, um, try to keep rates from going up. Um, I think, I think that also needs to be, um, kept in mind.
Okay, it is a lot of work when it comes budget time, but what should the council focus on? I, I think that one thing, Dave's right, when he said we do have to look out, we're going to have to pay the firemen, we got to pay this, so we know we got to pay a certain amount, but also, I'm thinking a little bit different from the rest of them, one thing of it, we have to know, uh, how much can our city people, how much can our people out there afford to? We can't just set things well high, and then maybe people can't pay for them, so I'm thinking the city has a role in thinking, how much can we afford to do?
The city has a responsibility to be fiscally responsible for the people. When looking at the budget, something that's really important to me, it seems to me from an outsider looking in, and I don't, don't claim to have all the knowledge of the city council or the or the, or the merits of the past, but it seems like a lot of times we're putting out fires. And I think with fiscally, and I think it's kind of what Dave mentions about, when the prices go up, you have this new money that wasn't accounted for that you, that you need to spend. I think it's really important to put a plan together. And the replacement of vehicles, I know that's one of the things that have been talked about a lot recently, the, the electric truck or whatever, have a plan for when those things are going to be replaced, how long we're going to have them, they bring up the water plant. We know that there's going to need to be money spent on these things, upgrading. It's just important to have a plan in place to know where we want to be. That doesn't mean that that's not going to get adjusted, because we know prices are going to change and all those kind of things. But we do have a responsibility also to know who our population is, who voted us, and what the people can afford. And that has to help dictate some of the decisions we make about what we're going to do with our city and how that's going to be structured. And again, and it's not directly tied to our budget, but I think cooperation with surrounding communities and the county and all those things are going to go a long way into helping solve some of those budget problems in the future.
Yeah, again, the question is, what should the council focus on? It's, it's not a lot different than your home budget if you focus on, on that. You do have an X amount of funds in your home budget to be able to spend on what you have to take care of on your property, whether it's roofs, sidewalks, gutters, what have you. Now multiply that times several thousand, and, and you've got a city budget. And I, and I don't want to make light of that, but when things need to get done, they need to get done. And I think it's Dave mentioned, and several others mentioned, we haven't always looked long-term with our decisions. We've may have looked towards the next election and, and made a promise that, well, we're not going to increase real estate taxes because we can't do it. But then we have a bunch of people come, which you should, and say, I want my street repaired. Well, it costs us money to do that. And if we don't have the reserves built up to do that, we've gotten ourselves in a tight spot. I'm on council now, I'm telling you, we're in a tight spot. Our reserves sitting there are not high enough to standard. So it might, talking about increasing tax law, we don't have to do it, hopefully we can do some things now, but that's what we have to focus on as a council with the budget. We have to take care of some sins of the past, and, and nobody wants to see increases. That's what brings economic development back into it. We can grow our way out of some of our problems if we focus on those efforts. But back again, back to the question of the focus, our immediate needs, safety needs with what we do with our police department, fire department, those basic needs, then starting with there, the infrastructure that we have. We've got a great water plant, and all I've seen in the, in the past year is all the problems we've had with rusty water. And some of you have been here at our city council meetings over the past couple of years, we've got some issues. So those end need, well, we're going to have to replace some water lines that are giving us fits. It's been mentioned, talking about the long, long term. We're going to have to start making some decisions now to do that, and it's not, it's not going to be fun. That's the responsible thing to do. And I'm willing to sit up here and tell you, or in a council meeting, we need to start doing those, and hopefully do it the least expensive way possible and the least burdened some to our taxpayers. But we have to do it. Our forefathers did, and, and that's what we need to do as well. So immediate needs, then thinking about those longer-term needs, that's the focus of trying to back, back into minimal or hopefully no increase to taxes, so.
He's brought up a lot, the panel has brought up a lot of good points, but you know, as you set your own budget, you have to decide on what are your needs and what are necessities. And probably what the city has to, to give you are the needs, not maybe all what you just want. You know, we all want to have a, a pavement out there in front of our house that does not have any potholes in it or anything else. But sometimes those potholes are, aren't brought on by, just as we said, short in the budget. We do our budget in August, and as, as the time comes around on the first of January, oh-oh, our revenues are down. And those revenues do not always come from property taxes, as you know, they come from utilities as well. And we get an increase on those utilities that come along about the first of January. So hey, we didn't, we didn't plan on a 25% increase. So you have to have a way of getting into those particular things. Well, how much can we get used from our utilities? That's one of our main revenues, and sometimes we have to, to transfer monies from those utilities that have been brought into our thing to take care of your needs out there. And so what do we do? Do we pass another sales tax? Okay, that may go by. Do we want to sunset, one on on that? So in all of these things, when we're using a budget, we are going to have to have revenues that are going to have to take us into the future as well. So if you just have something that takes care of the needs, that's not going to live down there. We're going to have to put some things back into our revenues as reserves. And as Todd said, we haven't done that for a while. We've had to use some things out there that we didn't want to use in putting up a levy to get it recertified. We've had other types of things that come out that weren't even planned for. So if we don't have to plan for those things, what, what do we do? Well, we'll have to pay for them anyway, because sometimes those regulations get into our way, and we just have to take them as they come along. And, and our city administrator has to deal with us and say, okay, guys, here's the other, here's our way we have to go, here's your choices, now how are we going to get it done? And that's his, that's the job that we have to do, that take what he has given us, and then make that budget work.
There can only be one focus on a budget, and that's you can't spend more than what you have. If we have to put back enough to do the repairs that need to be done, then we need to start that. The repairs and maintenance that we haven't done for 40 years, we can't correct in two or three years. We can't correct it with a tax hike. So budgets, Todd made almost every point that I wanted to make. Budget first and foremost, if you can't spend more than you have. Whether everybody's aware of it or not, this council has done a fine job. One of the few cities in this country that I've been in that actually has a balanced budget, they pretty much stay in the black. They're doing a pretty good job. We need to let the city take care of everything that it can, and when there's a shortfall, instead of depending on the council or the mayor to come up with a solution such as a tax hike or a rate hike on our utility, everybody in the city needs to come out here. This is our city, this is your city. If the city needs money, instead of making a tax, let's figure out a way to come up with the money. There are all kinds of possibilities. People used to have big roofs, we used to have barbecues, all kinds of things. That doesn't happen anymore. When you let the city be responsible for the city, that means everybody has to cooperate. I'm not talking about the government, I'm talking about the city, you and me. We are ultimately responsible for our own city. If we're not doing anything, we can't expect for the council to do anything. The, the focus on the budget is always the same, you can't spend more than you have. And these guys don't. But there's not enough to take care of the shortfalls of the last 40 years. And there won't be until we get up and figure out a way to bring revenue into the city. There are only so many people here. That means there's a finite amount of money to work with. If we don't have enough money in the city coffers, then it's up to us to cough it up one way or another.
Okay, moving on to our next question, I'll start with Melissa. What should the city's goals be in setting utility rates, water, sewer, electric, and trash again?
Well, I think the goal is always going to be not to increase rates for the citizens. That may not be how it always works out, but that needs to be the goal.
This could be a tough one, but in fact, I didn't know the city had a goal, but they should. But the goal is, is to take enough money to pay the bills on the other end, so we have something left to, to keep operating. And, but the city's goal would be to do the best they can to, which I mean, work smart, and so the rates don't have to be raised so much, but if they have to be, they have to be, because we can't buy something for one price and sell it for another, and so you've got to have enough to come out ahead to cover the expense. It's kind of like private business. But still, I, I personally think the goal, they should do their best to keep things cheap. I mean, or cost low, I don't like the word cheap, but keep things down so we can still operate and make, and keep going.
City's goal for water, sewer, electric, and refuse rates should be to provide the best service for the most affordable prices. The goal sounds easy, the way to get there probably isn't so easy. I know there are a lot of different options, and this is something that I get to afford to, to understanding more about, is just what, what those options are. I know with electrical, for example, you know, you purchase power from somebody, and there are different ways to do that. And we just have to find the most affordable way, and we also have to know, you know, what, what the citizens' expectations are. And that all goes into, to, to setting those rates. But the goal overall would be to provide the best service for the most affordable price.
This is a huge topic for just a few minutes, comment from all of us. The city doesn't have to do refuse pickup, it doesn't have to do electrical service. We have made that commitment in the past. But if we're serious about our rules, we need to revisit that to see if that's what we want to do. And I think that's what we want to do. The problem comes in is, well, how do we do it? Tomorrow night, we get, get to look at a presentation about what we're going to do about our electric rates. Whoever you elect up here who's ever at the council meeting as elected officials tomorrow, we don't get the choice about the cost that's handed down to us, but we get to decide how to do it. In my previous comments about, well, if we're short on cash in the bank for a reserve, this isn't going to be easy. As the mayor pointed out in a previous answer, is part of our electrical rates go to cover the rest of the city budget, and it's not done without ignoring the taxes on your real Part of these entities here have to raise extra cash to cover our budget. Don't like talking about it, but we have to do that. What we do have to keep in mind is exactly what Chad said, we have to keep a good service and keep it fair. Where we have done some things, if we really set the water and sewer rates to actually take care of what our, some of our failing infrastructure is, it would be through the roof. So that has to be coming from somewhere else. Your opinions are important, maybe you don't want us to be in the trash business. That could be something that could go outside somewhere else. We can contract, other cities do not have their own trash service, they contract out Some cities get power straight from other utilities and don't run their own infrastructure. That's a possibility. I don't agree with that, because when we have problems, those are the ones, we're the guy, we have the guys that will get out and get the power on as quickly as possible. With some other issues that we have with budgeting for electricity, we've been trying to replace some of our, our lines. We've been halfway done with improving, and we're kind of stalled out. And now we're looking at bids again to help us replace some of our infrastructure that should help us, but we're probably going to have to spend $100,000 in the short term or more to get us to be more efficient with our electricity in the city. Several groups, and one recent group I talked with, what about all these brownouts? Well, I, I think we're going to have them no matter what, because we don't have the generator down here that produces electricity. We're going to do what we can with our local infrastructure, do what we can, and continue to pray that the power still comes into town from the KPP, Kansas Power Pool, sorry, that's who, that's who we are currently contracted with, with our electricity. The goals are being fair, like was, what was said, and rates that are sufficient to cover our, not just the immediate needs, but our long-term needs. If we can't replace a bunch of power pools down the road because we didn't save up for it, well, that's our fault in order to try and keep your costs down. So it's a, it's a balancing act, and there's some happy mediums, but it's, these are tough decisions, and we are facing those over the next few weeks.
You've heard a lot of comments here, they're all good. And I think one of you, the things that I haven't heard yet is that we have been trying to get technology in, in the picture, and then some of you have been really unhappy with the radio type of, of reading of your water meters and your electrical meters. But as I have been talking to our city administrator and the guys that are out there working, those particular rates that they go out and, and read your meters are done within a short time, and then the time within you, the, after they are read, you get the bill. And if that is shortened enough time, you don't, you have a time to see whether it's getting done correctly. Now, I understand that we, it was hard for me to, to work, work for this technology that we have currently doing. But I looked at a stack of bills that you, as individuals, were sending into the office, that you were reading your own bills, and maybe none of you did, but there were, there were people that read their own bills and then turned them in, and then we took those particular readings to be the fact. So when we go to set those rates, we have to consider those types of things as well. What can we do, can we use technology to use, to better ourselves? And for sure, we now have the water situation, and we're going to have some replacements of, of those lines to put in. Mine has been put in, and so I have, don't have the trouble that some of you have with the rusty water. But we do know that there was a lot of dead ends that were put in here when we had different additions put in. So there's going to be rusty water probably, because there's not that turnaround. We have to go out there and flush those lines. And then somebody says, well, we're wasting that water. Well, how else are we going to get those things done? So if the rates have to cover all of those types of things, we have a tough job then to say, what is right? We want it to be affordable, but they're going to have to cut up, they're going to have to cover all of our, our expenses at least. And then we try to, as, as been said before, we have to then build up that reserve for those types of emergencies. I was told when I went to my first meeting down at Wichita, and it was on crisis, and they, they made a real crisis right there, and again, the firemen came in, all of those people came in to look to work on a disaster. And Hayesville mayor was there, and he says, it's not a matter of when, it's just, not a matter of if, it's just when it's going to happen. So we have to look at technology also for those plate, those maps to be made. And I am one of them now that are thinking that we do need to have some more of those types of things. Those all have to come out of the rates, people, or we don't get those things. So please be patient with us, and give us some other ways that we can pay on those things, or we will have to just take those things and, and to account and go ahead and raise them, which we, we don't like to do.
Well, and that just about covers everything that I can say about setting your utility rates. rates. The bottom line here that I can see is as long as we have to use money from utilities to bolster the rest of the city budget, we're going to be paying more than we need to. Because every point that everybody's paying is valid. We have to upgrade, we have to get technology, we have to replace things. All that can be done. But if we also have to balance the city budget, then we're paying more for our utilities, then it costs us together. And that comes back down to, everybody is responsible. Everybody can save the city money. If you cooperate, there are all kinds of groups out here that are working to coordinate, get them all working toward one goal. Other than that, your rates are going to go upward using money from the utilities to balance the city budget, not for utilities. And you can think what you want, but you have to use what you have. And it's not the city council's fault. They're working as hard as they can. They need the support of every person in the city. Thank you.
With our utility rates, we need to be as fair to our customers as we can possibly be. But in order to understand that, I think you need to understand what utility rates actually take care of. They provide the city with financial stability, for example. The general fund is funded by the mill levy. But what you may or may not know is that there's funds transferred from the utilities in order to assist the general fund in having enough funds available to get through the year for the budget. Now, if we didn't do that, you wouldn't like what your mill levy is going to be. Because I can tell you, when I left, we were probably transferring anywhere from three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars a year from the utility fund into the general fund just to keep it going. The other thing is you need to understand that each of the utilities, for example, water plant, the funds that come from the water plant sales, the sales of water, also assist in making bond payments on that water plant. Same way, I'm sure with the sewer fund, the sewer fund should be making the bond payments on the jet exhibition down there now. And electrical fund should be making, the electrical fund makes the majority of the bond payments that the city has to date. For example, any street issues we've had in the past, bond issues were given for those, and I guarantee you, the electrical department is making those payments. So having said all of that, you know, we've got to cover our expenses. We want to keep the mill levy down, so we're going to use utility rates to do that. We don't want to get our utility rates so out of whack that some of our businesses are going to say, I give up, you know, I'm going to move. At first, where their electrical rates are about half of what yours is. And, you know, we need to look at that, because now we're talking about an economic development issue when we do that. So we need to fund our utility rates, we need to keep them fair, we need to look very hard at what it is we're paying out. Can we cut some places? Can we cut some infrastructure out? Can we do some things? It's just something we've got to look at. We need to look at the revenue we need to bring in for the city to continue, and we need to look at the expenses that are going out.
Okay, our next question, we'll start with Jerry. What should be the city's strategy for maintaining, repairing, and improving streets?
Ah, this is a good one. Weather has a lot to do with it. I mean, we have very good strategy, and we do have strategy, but that has a lot to do with it. In other words, that's like shooting from the hip, you know? Get a pothole, you go fix it. But the strategy, and also, we have a five-year plan, making that street better, make it new, whatever, like Eisenhower that time. You've got to have, keep looking for grants so you know what you can fix. But the strategy for maintaining, one strategy is today, they're taking snow off the street. That's a very good strategy for keeping the street. It does cost, but also saves the streets, so that's one. And maintaining is, I don't know, we can do several different ways of maintaining the streets. And there again, that depends on the money you have. And repairing, we've got to repair it when they get bad. And I think that's about it, Chad. But we do have a plan to fix one every so often, so I do know that's in place. And the rest of it is you shoot off the hip.
Plan, again, is very important. Making sure that you stay ahead of the problems. When there is a problem, address it, maintenance. Continue to look forward in where the busiest parts are at. For example, when we tear up a street and fix a street, then understand where the traffic is going to go and the problems that's going to cause for the future. I think right now, looking at the streets, that's where a lot of the problems have came. The street that I live on now is basically destroyed, but that happened when the street heading out to John Deere was tore up, and that traffic was diverted over. So just understand, when you improve somewhere, then some other problems are going to arise from that. The city or the roundabout that's going to be put in at 150 and 77, my understanding is that traffic is going to be rerouted through downtown Marion, which the street was just replaced, fixed. Understanding that there could be problems that can arise from that, and just know that the people responsible for that need to help contribute to the upkeep and the future fixes that are going to have to be done. And just continue to follow the plan. If something out of the ordinary comes up, you have to take care of it and just keep maintaining it, so.
Well, the first strategy is to have a strategy. And to be honest, when I got on council, we didn't have one. We're very lackluster, and it was just shoot from the hip. That's not very good governance or planning. That's why some of our streets have gotten worse since we've been here, and over this next year, we're taking care of some of the worst ones. So shooting from the hip is not the right, the right way. Darren from EBH, and I'll point him out, has been very helpful in putting together this first plan of major street repairs for Marion. They went through everything, right Darren?
Yes.
They looked at every street in town, and I think we do have a plan. We're focusing on the ones that are worse. We have the funding for it and think, you know, you hate to thank goodness that the economy, economy went to heck here not too long ago, but it afforded us an opportunity to refinance some of our debt, or a lot of our debt that was out there, and do the street project. From here, we would love to have in the budget every year, X amount of dollars to repair streets and not have to do bond issues. We're not there yet. We don't have those reserves. That's where we'd like to be in the long term. And what happens when you're trying to maintain? Well, nobody's pothole is taken care of properly. I see Jeremiah here, your friend on Freeborn there, who always reminds me in a coffee that his potholes have, have, need to be refilled. And he thanks goodness when it snows, because it smoothes out Freeborn Street. That shooting from the hip and asking for divine intervention, that, well, that's great, but it doesn't help during the summer. It gets back to our plan. I think Darren is, has worked with the city to do that. I think Jerry did mention Eisenhower Street. We already need to talk about coating Eisenhower Street so it doesn't, so we don't run into the problems and let it go too late, and then we're having to repair the whole thing. The same thing with Cedar. Whether it was luck or not, our forefathers over a hundred years ago put brick streets in, and I am a fan of brick streets. They've lasted a long time. Some of them need some work. I'm for putting them back in. It's a little more expensive upfront, but they last a hundred years. When we made the decision to coat, chip, and seal some of these brick streets, I think we made a mistake. That's not going to be as easy to keep repairing. We're going to have to pull those out and go with something different. Again, it's, it's taking the stand that this is what we have to do before it gets too late, and I think Darren has told us that enough. If we do some maintenance, the required means ahead, we won't have the enormous cost of replacing these streets.
I've always been an advocate of planning, and I'll continue to be an advocate of the planning. And when I became on this council, one of the first things that Mr. Bayfield did as administrator, he showed me the book. I said, what are your plans? And he says, well, look at this book. He had some plans for some street paving and other things that were not done. And so he looked at me, and he said, do you think we could get this done? I said, well, let's go ahead and try. But as Todd said, he did some chip and sealing that probably we shouldn't have. Maybe we should have taken the time to go ahead and do some of those streets and do them well in the first place. I know there was one corner up on Main and Santa Fe that I was pretty adamant about, that let's get it fixed in the right way before we just go ahead and chip and seal that. So that's just one of the things that we've done. But we have done Cedar Street, we did Eisenhower. So what is the fact that Mr. Todd said here, that we have not done anything in the previous years? We have. We've had some water mains that have been replaced that I, since I've been on. So we have done some things, but yes, we have had some times when we have not been able to because the money wasn't there, the grants weren't there. We know we've got some stimulus money since, that we didn't have previously, so we have had to do that. Now, everybody didn't want to take stimulus money either, but I went ahead and took some of it, because I said, if I didn't, somebody else was probably going to do that. So I was going ahead and saying there that I would like to see that we do continue the planning, and I do know that Darb, planning city engineer here, or he is Nar City Engineer, but the engineer we're using right now has done a good job of picking out the streets and repairing, but that is the key. And I think that probably our city administrator gets tired of being saying that maintenance has always been in my life. As my husband, we had all the equipment that we had. We never had a major breakdown with that equipment the whole time. He was in and out there greasing and working on that equipment for maybe two hours before he'd go to the field. That was maintenance. He knew where every grease dirt was. So we have to depend upon our guys out there, the city crew, to be able to do that very same thing with our equipment, or we're going to have to buy new equipment as well as what we're going to do with those streets. We have got a crew now that can do some of those things ourselves, and I think that that's more important, too, that we now can get staff that are able to do some of this in-house things on our streets. So if we continue to do that and work to the future through that, and get your input on some of those things, whether we should be going outside our city or should we do it in-house. Remember, we have those everyday things like water digs, that was one of my corner there this year, and we had a skating party up there one time when it was real cold. But those are things that are happening every year, and we can't plan where they're going to be. But we do know that those are things that are going to have to be planned for, those types of things that's got to be replaced, or are they just the things that are coming along with nature? So thank you for being patient with us this year, because we have had our time with snow and everything else on those streets, but I've been very proud of our crew and what they've done to it so far.
To reiterate, Mayor Olson, maintenance, as far as a strategy for maintaining, that's a simple thing. And it should be not only for the streets, but for every aspect of taking care of the city, there should be planned maintenance schedules. And if we don't have people that can do the maintenance that's required, why are we not sending them to training? Every job that I've ever held, I was responsible for my equipment. I had to do the maintenance. I don't understand why that's not happening today. The city needs to plan maintenance, this is scheduled maintenance, as you know, things always go wrong. Repair, the strategy is simple. When it breaks, you have to fix it. Improvement is where we have a problem. That costs money. And once again, it's a matter of, do we have the money? If we need to improve streets, if we don't have the money, then we need to go out and find the money. And it's all here. There are ways to get that money right here in the city or communities around you, rather than look for somebody else to nail us out. Everybody needs to grab the bucket. Part of the maintenance, I heard a lot of uproar about, oh, you can't write a ticket for not blowing the grass in the gutters. You may not think that makes any difference, but it does. When you stop up the gutters, you stop up the drains, water gets underneath your streets. Hydropressure cannot be stopped. The water's going to go into holes, and it's going to push up wherever it can push up. When you block the drains and the gutters, you're tearing your streets up. All this needs to be addressed, and it shouldn't have to be a fine. This is your city. If you're blowing that grass and leaves and whatnot out into the gutter, you're causing harm to your city. Quit. If you see your neighbor doing it, talk to them about it. The city can only do so much, and the strategies are simple. You can only maintain so much, you have to fix what breaks. And then improvement has to come from us. We have to want it bad enough to pass a bond issue or a mill levy, or go out and find it ourselves.
Well, I think we all realize that maintenance is parrotting to our streets, and it's gotten to the point on some of them where our street department can't fix what's wrong. They don't have the equipment to do it, they don't have the know-how to do it anyway. And obviously, if you look at, for example, the streets there around the hospital, those streets are lost. They're going to have to be tore up, they're going to have to be a new base put down, they're going to have to resurface the streets. I don't know if they're going to have to do any curb, I haven't really looked at that. But those type of things is we don't, we don't have the equipment or the expertise to do that. There's no way. As far as the maintenance on the streets, what we need to do, I think, is look at prioritizing these streets. One needs to be tore completely up and fixed. Okay, well, that's a council decision, and the council needs to look at that. Then we need to look at the prioritization of the other streets, or some of them, maybe the half a street needs to be tore up, or some of them, just the pothole like Jerry was talking about, needs to be fixed. I think we've been a little bit lack, and what we could do is fix some of these streets, and that's the reason that some of them are in pretty bad shape. So I think we just need to prioritize it and get our city crews out there. Another thing, and I, you know, I don't know, I need to look at it, I think the council needs to look at it, is do we have enough people on our street department to even do all this stuff? You know, we're utilizing city workers to help with the electrical department, to help with the water department, to help with the sewer department, and when they're pulled off all of that, they're not, they're not doing anything on the streets. So I just think we need to look at it as a whole and come up with a good plan.
It kind of already sounds like there is a strategy in place. I think ultimately, we need to look at the roads, the major roads, the ones that are traveled the most. Those need to have the top priority. And then after that, I know, in my area, it seems like the potholes, they get refilled and refilled and refilled. You know, kind of like what Dave was saying, figure out how we can fix them and fix them right, fix them before they get too bad so that we're not having to keep, you know, fixing the same problem. But it sounds like Darren has some sort of a strategy that we can build from.
Okay, this is going to be the last of the questions that I have, so this is a final reminder for anybody who wants to submit their own question. We'll start with Chad. Should city government have a role in recycling? The county has its single-stream recycling program where you can drop it off. The county has its single stream recycling program where you can drop it off at the transfer station. Should the city have any sort of role in expanding on that?
I think the program that the county has works well. I know we use it at the middle school. We just haul the recycling down. I think recycling is really important. The thing that we have to understand with that, for the city to get involved in the collection of recycling, it's going to cost money. And that money is going to be paid in by the citizens. So I think the most important thing when talking about recycling is to get the city's input, to get the citizens' input. Do they want recycling? What do they want for recycling? I know some places, you know, will just have a semi trailer parked down and people take their own recycling. We have that option available to us by the county and now it's every day. You can take it down and you don't have to sort like you used to. It goes in one room and all that gets done in another place. I have heard people talk about recycling and wanting the option of that. But again, it just, it's all what we're willing to pay for it. Is it important enough? Is it a goal that we want to move forward with? And in the end, pay a rate to do that. And it kind of goes back to the refuse, you know? There are other options. Do we continue to do our own trash? Do we pay that to be done by somebody else? The same thing would apply with recycling. If the city starts collecting recycling, I'm assuming that means another truck and more people and all of those different types of things. And we just have to understand that that costs money. Not that it's a bad thing, but understand what comes along with another service being offered.
Like Chad said, our residents in the city are very fortunate that we are here because you can participate in the current recycling program with the county. And like Chad said, the whole issue of what part of the city plays comes in dollars and cents and how we look at setting rates and what we can and can't do or what is acceptable service. We've talked about it. I think we'll have some other proposals coming up. In theory, it's a great idea. We have to balance it with what it will cost the citizens. And so we will make our decision accordingly. But it's a great idea and we are so fortunate to have the county program here that before the city does anything, every Marion citizen can recycle, so.
I think I've always been a advocate of recycling, but didn't want to do it because I hated to have to take those papers to over here to tin cans and the glass over there, whatever. But since we've come to this recycling of just single stream, there isn't any reason why anybody can't do that. Of taking their trash and separating that particular part that is not any good to be in our land into our recycling bin, then put it over here into the trash bin and it will be taken and by our regular people. But as to whether we have a plan now here in this city, I don't think we have. We've had some other things to take priority to this and I don't see it happening in the real near future. I think we've got some workstations that we're going to have to have. And then when we have those workstations, I would like for everyone to come and take a part in those workstations. I know that one person down here on the front row will be there because she's a very important advocate of this particular program. And I would hope to continue it and keep it going in the county. And that's up to you people as well to see whether we can get it even better in our county or what are we going to do? We have some important decisions to make here in our city. I do know that they're working with the volunteers over at Hillsborough. That's not working too well because we can't get the volunteers now. So we are here in Marion and are very fortunate. We have the transfer station right down there that we can take our trucks or pickups and take it right down there and leave it and let them take care of it from that point.
The city government should definitely have a role in recycling. It should be a role of support and encouragement. Yes, it is inconvenient to have to separate everything. But you usually put things in the trash one thing at a time. It's not hard to do. I want to encourage recycling because everything that you can recycle can be sold. It's a revenue stream. Now, the city can't afford to put the workers in there that it would take, but volunteers can do it. And that's another revenue stream for the city. If it's done in the correct manner, you can actually make a business out of it. You can make money. It's not hard to do. But once again, the city shouldn't be responsible for it. They should encourage it. They should help it. But it has to come from the citizens. There's a major revenue stream out there for all the things that you can recycle. We may have to hold them until we've got a big enough load to make it worth shipping or hauling. That part of it would be unpleasant. But it can be done. It's been done in cities all across the country here. Where Kansas has a dollar to two dollar disposal fee on tires. Most of the places in Arizona don't charge you at all. They want your tires. Some of them buy your tires because they recycle the rubber. Same with aluminum cans, with carbon, with plastic. It can all be sold. But it takes huff the citizens out here doing it because it will cost the city as much money as they make if they're trying to do that.
Well, we all know we have recycling down at the county transfer station. So I assume the question probably comes down to should the city government have a role in curbside recycling? Because I think that's what we're talking about here, is curbside recycling. I think we'd have to look at it, and the council would definitely have to look at it, is that going to be an extra cost to the city? If it's going to be an extra cost to the city, then do we pass that along to the customer? Or can we look at the refuse budget and see if it's making enough money to possibly support that? We'd have to look at what's going to cost us to do it. Are we going to have to buy a different truck? Because recycling truck is totally different than a trash truck we currently have. So that's a pretty good expense right there. Who's going to pay for it? Well, I'm assuming that everybody would have to pay for it. Everybody in the city would have to pay for it. Or could we work out a thing whereas only the people that want recycle could pay for it? They could sign up to the city and say, "I want you to come and pick this up and we charged them additional fee for that." You know, if there's not many of them, we could probably do it with a pickup truck. I don't know. But I think we're talking about curbside recycling and I think it's something that we could definitely look at. And I think we need to know what kind of interest we have in it, how many people would be interested in doing it, and then make an intelligent decision as to how we want to do it.
I think with the current operation of the transfer station, I don't think it's needed at this point in time. But I do think it's something that we need to consider and see what the citizens say, like Chad said. Maybe it is something that we can do for just those that are willing to pay a little extra. But I don't know, you know, again, that's one of the issues is additional fees and raising costs. I don't know if that's something that anybody is going to want to do. But I do think it is something that we need to address in the future.
The question is, should city government have a role? We should have a role if we can afford it, or kind of like Dave said. We need to be good stewards. We need to have more meetings with the county to see how we need to work this. Maybe it's working, but some people don't want any part of it. So, but the bottom line is, we're working with county. I mean, we are, but we should be because they're hauling it off and it's costing money. So there's a portion of that that could come back to us that could save us money. But we're going to have to get this coordinated with the county, how we're going to do this and then make decisions. But the question is, I think the city should have a role in it.
Okay, that takes care of the entire slate of scheduled questions. Oliver, are there any questions from the audience back there? No? Okay. Does anybody want to ask a question themselves? Yes.
There's currently a 0.75% sales tax revenue that goes towards economic development. And all of your answers on economic development pertain to, you know, how we could go about doing that. We currently have it funded, so I'm curious what you're going to do about it and what you're willing to pay. The current economic, there's an economic development position has been open for some time. And I'm curious what you're willing to pay that person for economic development with the funds that are currently budgeted slated for economic development. So I don't care who answers it, but probably one of the existing councils.
Why don't we just start from near end as we started off this, as we got through the line?
I tried to write it all down, what you were asking. I'll go backwards maybe and then if I miss something, JB will let me know. Currently, we have budgeted for salarying around $35,000 and Roger can correct me if I'm wrong on that, plus the benefits that would be there for the economic development and tourism spot, which now also includes some of your administrator. Yes, we do have the 0.75% sales tax for economic development. That's what's paying for the bonds, actually, I think you remember that, out at the industrial park and business park. Close enough?
I think you asked about the 0.75% sales tax and how it was being used. And I think that's one of the things that I'm currently asking the city administrator to help me figure out so I can get it back to the constituents because that did not have a sunset date. And therefore, we're taking that money in each year and now how is it being spent? I would imagine most of you constituents, if you knew about it, where is it going? We have, now, I probably need to have you to verify some of this, but we have quite a few dollars that are spent here for sales tax and we're very privileged to have that. And so I've had the opportunity to get some of our constituents to ask me about that. Are we paying for that industrial park? What is it going for? Yes, you're right. It has to be paid. We have to take funds out of that for our economic director. But what else? We don't give them $75,000 or $85,000 or even $100,000, which we might be taking in our sales tax. So we do have to know where that's going. We do know that there were other things that happened up there in our industrial park that we didn't have any control over and so now we're paying for that probably. But what do we want to do with that 0.75%? Because that's what we as voters did vote to get it on to go for economic development. But you know, you can almost say a sidewalk can be economic development. And JB, you worked on that as a safe route to school and did a good job of that. And I think that was economic development. So should we just use that for strictly things that you can see or what should it be used on? That's my thing that I'm going to be asking our city administrator and our city clerk and everybody to help me get informed on that.
I'm not sure just what you wanted to know, other than what are you going to spend it on? Being not a member of the city council, an infrequent visitor, I try to keep abreast of what's going on. I'm not real sure what the plans are as far as what we are going to pay as the city administrator. Or I'm going to tell you now, if you look me in as mayor, I squeak when I walk. As far as economic development, I would rather have a volunteer in. But we will pay whatever it takes, I'm sure. We have to have somebody out there that's doing the development and coordination that needs to be done.
What's the question after? How much are we paying now for economic development director? Because I missed that.
Yeah, $35,000.
Okay, we're paying $35,000 now. Six years ago, we were paying $50,000 or something. So there's a large difference there. And also, I understand that we don't know where the economic development money's going. Is that right?
And I missed that part of your question. That's what, we all know as council members, or we should, Mayor, that most, you know, or as Ruth has asked, it's going to bond payments. And those bond payments, like I said in the first part of my question, get retired in, what, 16 or 17 years? I can't remember the exact number. There's about, do you know, Ruth, the exact date? I don't have that in front of me.
It goes to 2022.
22, okay. All but about $20,000 to $25,000 of that sales tax goes to bond payments. The rest of that goes into the general fund. Is that not what you got, Ruth?
No, last year we collected $148,000 in tax. We made a bond payment of $15,000. And then there's a budget set up for economic development of $77,000, but we didn't spend all that.
Yeah, and the general fund, because we didn't have, we didn't have an economic development director. Let's make sure, so everybody knows, the sales tax money goes into the general fund. Doesn't go anywhere else but the general fund. And then we pay the bonds out of that. You're right, the money can go anywhere else. But if you look at it, we still budget more for economic development in the $77,000 range. And that's not all salary, folks. That's just part of it. That's one of the other things that we do for economic development. But we definitely know where it goes and it's not tagged to anything else. It's general fund money, but we have the obligation on the bonds.
A lot of that is used for the industrial parks such as taxes and stuff like that.
Yeah, most, Dave and you know that, most folks don't know the city pays property tax on all of the real estate that is owned by the city out at the industrial park and business park. So it costs us to own it. It's not free land. Your tax, your sales tax dollars, that since this goes into the general fund, your tax dollars go into doing that. That's what, when I said earlier in the first question, that if we get that out into other hands, we're not going to have to pay that extra cost.
Well, if there's excess funds there, it should be identified and the budget should know exactly how much it is. And if there's excess funds, maybe we ought to be making extra payments to pay that off. I mean, if we can afford to pay an economic development director and have a slice fund of $77,000, we're not going to be paying that bond off. And I do believe that once that bond's paid off, there's a sunset on it and that sales tax goes away.
No, there's no sunset.
You're sure of that?
Yes, I called the people and I found that out. It was about three years ago.
It shouldn't be in the bond. You should be able to pull it out if I look at it and tell you.
Right, but there is no sunset.
Mary, it goes away with the, with the rest of the state for?
Yes.
The bond's are paid or it's not?
That's a sunset, yeah.
I can't, I have the knowledge to offer you.
I don't think I have anything to add into all that.
I don't have anything to add to that here. Okay, did anybody else have a question for the candidates? No?
I'm Jeremiah Lang. I wear a variety of hats in the community. But one of them is as a father of an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. I've been able to kind of observe this city for the last eight years and see how the city council, the mayor, the administrative office function. I'm interested to know what your assessment is of the city over the last five years, what your assessment is of the city now, and what your vision is for the future of the city.
Let's start with Mary this time.
Jeremiah, what assessment? Do you want it in dollars and cents or business or what would you like?
Now, what's your impression?
My impression, I moved to Marion in 1996 after I had retired from the center district. And my impression of Marion has always been that we need to grow. I mean, we seem to be sitting here in one place and can't get quite the little foothold that I wanted to take. And I don't know where it comes from, but I do need to, I need the help of everybody here in this Marion city to help me to find that out, to get, how to get this little engine going here a little bit faster. Because I do think... Because I do think that we do need to grow and get our tax bases up as well. But we do have a friend, a community here. I disagree that we don't have a, a welcome hand to any business that is coming in. And if they come in and find that our rigs are too hot, are not good enough for them, well then, they might not have been too interested enough in it in the first place. We set our rigs so that we do not have something reside of our own house that we don't want. And the setbacks, I do not see anything that's in those rigs that have been too unpleasant. If you start at square one and work your way through it, you're going to have a good product when you get done. And I don't think that's always been done. We have to encourage those people when they come. By having our zoning administrator now know what those rigs are, they're able to say, hey, now you can go to this part of the city and put your business in, and I think you'll be better off there. And you won't have to get rezoned, because it's already zoned. But if you want to have it over here, we're gonna have to work with you. And we can work with you. So don't think that you will not be worked with, because our planning board will do that. And I think that that's what I have seen come around more than anything in this city, that we have the planning that's starting to do that.
Oh, boy, I bet I'm gonna cut my throat here. I came to this town about thirty-five years ago, not as a resident, more as a visitor, and probably not a welcome one in a few places. Fourteen years ago, I came back to this town to live. I had a young daughter. I wanted her in a place that was safe. Five years ago, I moved back here to retire. I'm done. I can't work anymore at a steady job. Doctors keep telling me I'm gonna wear out here pretty soon, but I'm not there yet. So I wanted a place that's safe and comfortable to retire. My assessment of Marion is that in thirty-five years, it just hasn't changed much. People are still insular and resistant to change. And I understand that. I don't like change. I have a tendency to look towards taking care of me, but that doesn't work. The past five years, I've seen a lot of effort, but I'm not seeing the production. That's why I'm up here. No matter what your city council does, no matter what your mayor does, if you're not out here working as hard as they are or harder, the city's not gonna grow. Change is inevitable. Doesn't mean we have to like it, but we do have to accept it. In order to grow, you have to change. Part of that means everybody out here has to be working together. Not in this group here, and this group here, and this group here, and this group here. Everybody has to be working for the common goal. I used to assess cities for development. The attitudes in this city over the past thirty years have been insular. You don't want the outside here. You want to keep it like it was in the 1880s. Aesthetically, I can appreciate that. Economically, you can't do that. It's not the 1880s anymore. We have to find a way to direct change. Change in and of itself isn't necessarily good. Directed change is the only way to grow. And that direction has to come from everybody in the town.
Jeremiah, in answering your question, as far as I'm concerned, you've got to look at the population. Five years ago, our population's the same and probably pretty close to what it is today. Maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. I think that's what defines your community, is your population growth or loss. If you're getting a growth on it, then you're probably looking at some economic development stuff that's worked out well. If you're looking at a loss, then you're, you're looking at, you haven't had that in place. Five years from now, that's what we've got to work on. I don't care what the answer is in five years from now or what will be. But we've got to start looking and trying to get some small businesses in here. We can't have a large business like Boeing coming into Marion. We can't handle that. We don't have housing. We don't have a property, you know, big enough or something like that. But there's a lot of small businesses out there that we can be looking at. And how do we do that? Gotta go through economic development. What kind of economic development? I don't know. I've got a plan that I think might work. I'm not so sure that everything we've done in the past has worked. I recall visiting with some high school students probably about six years ago, and it was a senior class. And I asked them, I said, Ed, how many of you are gonna go to college? And I think almost everybody were gonna hold their hand up. And I said, how many of you plan on coming back and running the work? None, not any of them. And then I asked the question, if the jobs were available, how many of you could come back? And almost everyone of them held up their hand. So that's what we've got to look at, you know? We're stagnant, I think, in that area. And that's what it's gonna take to make a difference in Marion in five years.
As far as an assessment over the last five years, I have actually been here exactly five years. So it's kind of hard for me to know exactly what's, what's, what's transpired. I do have a comparison in the, in the sense that I moved from a small community that is relatively the same population as what Marion is. It's from western Kansas, and they were in a lot worse off condition than what we are. Their, their main street just dilapidated, I guess is how I should say it. And when my husband first brought me here to Marion, I really wasn't looking forward to moving, nor did I really want to. But, you know, let's come to Marion, just look around. You know, reluctantly, I did. You know, and I was very impressed. It's a clean town. Main street, there were businesses there, which there could be more. It's just a very welcoming community. And, you know, I, you know, we moved here. We've been here five years, and we're very happy here. And I hope that more families such as ours will get the same impression if they come here. So an assessment, you know, I, I think Marion is doing okay. And I don't know, you know, from a budget standpoint, what that is. This is just looking from the outside, you know, comparing to what I know. We're doing okay, but I think we need to fight. We need to fight to bring businesses in here. I know that there's been some potential businesses that have looked at coming in, and I don't know exactly what the reason why, why they chose not to come. But I think we need to fight to get more younger families in here. If they're not gonna come, if there's no jobs, luckily for me and my husband, it was pretty easy for us to find a job. We definitely, we can't have more people come in here if there's no jobs. So as far as a vision, more businesses, more younger families, more jobs, and just a pre-community where we can be proud to live. And, you know, maybe people passing through will be like, gee, you know, this is, this is a, a smaller community, but, you know, whereas some other smaller communities, maybe they haven't prospered as well as we have. And I guess that's what I want my vision to be for Marion, is, is just that we, we keep fighting. And, you know, stagnant, I think is a perfect word. We don't just sit stagnant.
Good.
You know, at your last five years, your assessment, things happen so little at a time. Sometimes you forget, you know, what it looked like and what it looks like now. I believe that, you know, it's a gradual thing. We do have a plan. We have committees out there that are working. And it seems like every time we have a economic director, something happens. And then when we don't have one, it seems like things get stagnant again. But in November, we had a meeting right here, and it was, the league sponsored it. The league is an organization that the city Marion belongs to. And other cities were invited here. And that night, I talked with the director, and believe it or not, I get around a lot and I look a lot. I know we need, we need a lot of improvement. I know that. But I'll tell you what, it starts with pride. And we do have, we're ahead of a lot of other cities, you know? That don't mean we can't improve, because we can. But my assessment of that is, we're better than a bunch of them, and we can get better yet.
Amen, brother.
Fifteen years ago, approximately, my wife and I moved here. No children. And I'm gonna be totally honest with you. One year stopped. One year stopped. My wife said, let's move to Marion. There's a teaching out there. And I was like, oh, dear. Okay, moved here. We fell in love with this place. Five-year assessment, stirring in the last five years. I think a lot of things, there are ideas out there. There are people that want to move forward. And it's a transition period. This town has a rich history, which we need to hold on to. In the same right, if all we do is hold on to our history, we're gonna be history. I don't mean that in a bad way, but we have to move forward. What I see today as an assessment, this might not be exactly the angle that you're looking for, but what I see today as an assessment is a group of people in an awesome community that want to move forward. That want to move forward. And I think it's time to build on that. And I think we have to stop talking about it, and I think we have to move forward. I think that involves the citizens in Marion. I think it involves the city and citizens in Marion County. And the future can be bright. And I want my daughter to be one of those people that Dave said he talked to and said, if there's a job here, I want to move back here. And I can guarantee you she won't if there isn't a job here. We were fortunate as well, because we're both teachers. And if you live in Marion, if you're a teacher, if you're a nurse, or if you're a police officer, or you work at hospital in any form, you got a pretty good chance of getting a job. Outside of that, it's, it's, it's pretty minimal at best. And I just think we have a lot of opportunity here. And I think there are people, I will tell you for myself personally, I love government. I don't like politics. And I love history. And I'm only setting up here, not pretending to have all the answers, but I'm only setting up here because I want at least offered myself to be part of that change in the future, to make this place what it can be.
I came, my family and I came to town eight years ago. And things were, in general, more positive. In the past five years, I've been embarrassed as a citizen, and that's why I ran for council and why I'm running for mayor. Our city government did no justice for how they've handled things in the past, what's been in the newspaper. We've done this to ourselves. I'm running because I don't want that anymore. I don't want to fight over a forty-foot tower, ninety-foot tower that got ugly and disrespectful to the county and the citizens of this town. It looked terrible in the paper. If you looked at that and haven't lived here, would you want to move to Marion? And I saw, I've seen this over the past five years, and I'm disgusted with it. That's why I'm running. I don't want that. That's not how I will run a council or help run this city with your support. There's time for change. That's not how we do it. That's not how we attract national companies to this town. It was disrespectful to our citizens. And I'm telling you right now, that's not how I'm going to do business, or any of my appointees are gonna do business. We need to move the town forward. So there's my assessment of the last five years. In the last two, I got on council to help make a difference. I'm tired of the excuses that have been made in the past. I'm willing to do it, and I'm gonna put my reputation, my name on the line. I'm gonna do good things. I'm gonna lead towards the future. Yes, your input's important, but guess what? All of you have jobs too. You can't spend the amount of time. Your, your input is important, but you also need to let folks you can trust. I trust mayor, I trust the council, that they're gonna make good decisions for me. That's why I'm running. I think I can do it. I've done it. I'm not gonna go through my resume. If you want to talk about it later, we'll do it. But I'm up here to make a difference. Now, how much can government change? It's very slow. It's very slow, but we can do it. We can do it. I see others in our community that are on different boards that are trying to help a group, and I'll mention it, the Circles Group, and I'm proud to be supporting it then. But there are volunteers right now that are stepping up and doing things in this community. That's great. They're doing their part. I'm gonna take and make the city do the things that we're supposed to do, do, do them well, and give everybody an opportunity to do well in our community. One of the things that was talked about is population. Yeah, our population's about the same as nineteen, in the last five years, around 1,990, 2,000 people. But the scary thing is, we've lost 100 kids in the school district. It's not just city government folks that makes, that makes this work. We can lay the things out that can. And I'm willing to do that, and there are some changes that, that we need to do. Part of it's our strategy. Well, and you can't have just one. We can't just say, well, and I've probably been down this path and said, just filling up the business park and industrial park won't do it. It's not it. There's major macro things that are changing, but that's a start. We have to focus on it and work on that. But we also need to try to get families here. Well, if we can't provide the jobs, we can try to provide the housing. We're gonna have ten new duplexes, twenty new units over here in September one. We're giving opportunities for folks older, retired, maybe lower income, to have some great refurbished or brand-new housing to help open up homes for families here. I can't guarantee them a job, but if they can work where things are a little more active, maybe Hillsboro, maybe over in McPherson, maybe down to Newton. I know some of our residents are driving clear to Wichita. We want them here. This is a great place to raise a family. We have a good school district. We have an excellent hospital. We can sing more praises about what we have, and we're trying to do it. The city does certain things well, and that should well, sometimes not. I'm gonna change that. We're not the best economic development folks, but we need to do our part. Infrastructure, roads, streets, making sure, if you want to bring a business here as a national company, our ordinances don't limit you to do that. That's what I want to do. With the help of the council and your input, I think we do have a great group of folks in this community that want to see it go. This community has done it before. I wrote down some names, and I apologize if I leave any out. The Bradbury Company was, was started, I think, with John Crowfoot, Bill Meyer, folks that have auto parts. We had folks that were investing in the community and helping to start small businesses here. We've lost that. We've lost some of that. Can the city replace that? No, but we can do what we can very well and do it so others can do that. We're not good at private industry. We're not good at that. We're good at trying to take care of streets and infrastructure. That's where I, I come from. I think you clearly have choices in this election this year about where we're going. And a vision for the future, Jeremiah, in five years, if we could get 50 kids back, I think that would be successful. I'd like to get 100 back that we lost in this last five years. And I want to, if we don't get it, I do want the residents to say, well, the city did everything they could to make it as smooth as possible to try and make that happen. So that's what I see.
Any more questions for the candidates? In that case, let's move on to what... In your definition, how would you define open... In your definition, how would you define open government?
Repeat that. Open candidate?
Open government.
Open government?
How would you define it in your own opinion?
Well, you know what, Darvin? I was just gonna bring that up in my closing statements, but since he's already said something about what I would assume is gonna be his closing statement, I'll just go ahead and tell you. Transparency is one of the biggest things I hold to as an elected official. And my transparency means that our city administrator is gonna give us everything we need to know as to how to make those decisions. And then we're going to go out and take its constituents' concerns and bring them back as well, as what he finds as, or she finds as something that we need to do. And then we go to that four room, that place right over there, it's got four walls, and that's where we make our major decisions, where everybody can see and hear. Sometimes you don't hear what all of us think, because some of us just wait and tell, "Okay, we are voting." You don't see me doing that. Open government to me means that you're gonna get to the bottom of how I feel, right there in that council room, probably, because I'm gonna be asking questions, and then I'm gonna go out and do it to the community. I'm gonna ask more questions, and when they ask me, I'm gonna come back and see if I can find those answers. And that, to me, is what open government does. We can't make decisions until we get right into there. And if we try to, that's not open government. We need to keep the really important thing is what we do right there in that council room.
I think what we have most anywhere in this country is open government. What we have is closed eyes. Anytime the constituents, the citizens of a community quit coming to the council meetings, quit going to the board meetings, that's when you end up with a closed government. When you don't get input, you have to deal with whatever you've got. I would be willing to go out into the community and get your input. I would much rather have a monthly or bimonthly city meeting. Council members should be having meetings with their constituents. How do you feel about what we're going to vote on? Okay? But it doesn't do any good to have those meetings if everybody doesn't show up. And not everybody, but as many people as possible. And then, you've gotta talk to your friends, your neighbors, your coworkers, whoever. As far as I know, it's almost impossible to make a very large decision by the city council without somebody knowing about it. The open government is here. What we have are closed eyes and closed ears. I'm happy to see everybody here today. You've got your eyes open. You've got your ears open. You want to hear what we've got to say. There shouldn't be anywhere to stand in here. Very tiny portion of the citizenry of this town. And this should be as important as anything else to every citizen of this town. So if you want to open government, get out and get involved in it. Because the way almost all governments are set up in this country is open. You have the right to request any kind of information. None of us are supposed to be able to hide anything. Am I far wrong on, I do believe almost everything is open. Except personnel. And even that, you can have input on. If you have a concern, you should be knocking on the mayor's door, or your councilman's door. My whole agenda here is to wake everybody up. Quit waiting for somebody to come and tell you, "Well, I'm gonna decide to raise your rates." You know, I'm sure you probably don't like it, but I'm gonna do it. Instead of waiting on somebody to come and tell you, get out there and find out. Once again, this is your town. You are responsible for it. I am responsible for it. If you live here, you're responsible for this town. If you want the open government, show up at the meetings, get involved, make some of the decisions. Don't leave it up to the city council and the mayor. All the meetings are open. The Kansas Open Meetings Act and the Open Records Act, they ensure that.
Is your question just a general question about open government? Do you have anything specific, Darvin?
What do you consider open government?
Well, per se, we don't make any decisions on closed doors. We don't make any decisions prior to a council meeting. If an individual on the street wants to know what the budget is for the city, they certainly have the opportunity to go into the city administrator and ask him to see it. It doesn't cost you anything to look at it there. If you want a copy of it, you're gonna pay for it. But you can sure sit right there at the counter and go completely through it. And in my personal opinion, he should be able to explain any, anything you don't understand about it. So open government should be just, whatever information you want to know, it should be made available to you, period. With the exception of employee personnel issues, because that's, by law, you can't just divulge that.
Open government. I would say, kind of what we're doing today is open government. The citizens being able to voice their opinion or ask questions about the candidates. You guys able to know what's going on with the city, able to ask questions, you know, being involved at the council meetings to meet that open government.
Open government to me is, there's no hidden issues, no politics involved. So everybody out there knows really what we're doing, and not something secret behind it. Because I'm sure it probably happens. And by the way, this is my last question, because I got a dinner engagement.
Open government, repeat a lot of what these guys said. I'm not gonna waste your time. But transparency, not making decisions without the people having the opportunity to know about it. And I look at it another way as well. Open government, you've heard a little bit about involvement. And I think for open government to really work and democracy, you can go on to whatever level that you want to go to. Three hundred and six voters in the last city election here, that's not a very good example of open, working government. For open government to matter, people have to be involved. And that's one of the most important things for me, looking forward. We have to have the citizens involved, and I think there's a lot of smart people here. And if we all put our heads together, and we all get involved, then government's going to be open. Because people are gonna be there, they're gonna be here. It's easy to make a claim of there not being open government, when people aren't making the effort to be involved. So that would be my example.
I think it's been answered, Darvin, unless you have something specific that you want to break up. Probably not in the last two years, but prior to that, I'd seen where this council was not open government. I've seen that, experienced that, accidentally been a part of not having open government. I don't agree with it. I don't agree with it. We have our responsibilities, our staff has their responsibilities, and decisions get made in the council room. Now, there's a ton of discussion that happens outside that council room, and it should happen. Everyone that's elected should be talking to their constituents. That doesn't constitute a decision. Open government is talking about it. Non-open government is having elections that are rigged. That's not open government. Having this venue here, where you actually get to come and talk to candidates, that's open government. But we have had issues. It's not gonna happen this way. And I'm gonna talk. I've talked to you quite a bit. I'll talk to anybody. I'll give you my thoughts and ideas about what goes on. That's open government. Making decisions without that is not open government.
Okay. Looks like we've got another question.
As most of you know, I sit on the planning board. And in January, I was absent, but I read the minutes where it was requested or suggested that the regs be taken off of the city website. Now, is this open government?
One of the problems we had, Ruth, is that we lost a national company that got to those regs and decided not to come here if it wasn't for a follow-up. So, yes, they're important, but when you're talking about economic development and the plan and the things that need to change, we need to pull those off and start addressing that. They can still come to the office. We want the opportunity for somebody to make a contact with us and not just look. And your group has a hard job. The expectations are gonna be higher than what they have been. As Mary said, with the planning that needs to be done, the strategic plan. But yes, it is open government, so we can fix the things we need to fix. Why did we lose that opportunity?
But Todd, Ruth, are you aware that all the cities around us have their regs on the website? You can go to any city, and I have to say that.
And I didn't say not posting them.
Marion, Marion's regs are almost exactly like the city's.
But they're not exactly like them. And we don't have companies coming here or looking at that. If that's something that we can do to change it, it's a marketing tool. Call us. Don't just go to the website, pull it off, decide not to come here, but we didn't have a chance to even discuss changing something? We're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to recruit. And if we've got problems, which I believe we do, and we haven't addressed it, we need to start doing that. And that's planning commission. You need to know the information of why that company decided not to come here. Right, and it has been. And I think Roger's done that, may have been at a meeting that you missed. We're doing that, and we're going to do that, and that's important. But to put that out and have a national company not come to town because they didn't like what was in our regs, well, we gotta start fixing that. It's not hiding. If they come to the office, if they call, we'll send it. We want the opportunity to talk to somebody and get them to come to town. Not just flat off, "Not come to town" because of what they read in our zoning laws. So your group has, if I'm mayor, will have a large responsibility of fixing these things, to make the recommendations, to come back to the council to do that. It's not anything about open government. It's about how do we market ourselves? How do we change and make the city a place where people want to come do business?
There are also, Todd, other things that are involved besides the rules that keep these companies from coming. Population is one of them.
Yeah, attitude. Just list that. And I talk about that. Ruth, your group caused a heck of a mess with this damn tower. That's not acceptable to me. That is not acceptable.
That tower was not planned. I went to the city administrator and asked for six months, whatever, and said, "Have we got everybody on board there? Have they been following what is supposed to be made?" And what did it come to? The Marion County record.
An embarrassing mess.
The city, the Marion County jail does not get building permits. Now, where did that fall down? That wasn't the building, that wasn't the planning zoning fault. That was somebody else's fault down there in that particular courthouse, I would say, that didn't come in and do their planning. And that's what I'm saying. If you start at square one, we're gonna work with everybody. If that particular company that didn't, that looked at our regs and said, "I'm not going there," how did you find out about that? It must have been a contact there at some point. I never get those kind of calls, and you never have told me anything too much about those particular things. I'm the last one to know. That, I don't know why you wanted me off that M E D I, but you did. And so I got off it, and Chris got on it. And so therefore, I haven't been coming to those meetings very often until you wanted to know that whether there was an economic director to be had. And I did like the way that you proceeded with that particular part of it. And so I think we're doing some positive things with that planning and zoning that was never done before, and that is putting to work. And that is what I've been wanting them to do, is get to work. I've axed them with one, everything that you did. We've got a tower down there that you can't see. I go by it every day, and where is that tower? Oh, oh, there it is. Looks like Flagstaff. If I'd had a big ninety-two or whatever foot tower, one hundred, whatever it was supposed to be, tower, and, but didn't follow the regs, I would have been unhappy, because if I lived in the backyard like Mr. Barkley did, I would have been very hard to see what in the world would they put up a tower like that? And all it would have taken was the sheriff to go up on top of the roof and to see that there was a repeater there that he could receive. Putting up a tower? Well, what, wait, wait. Did you want to put up a tower? Why did you want to put up a tower? Oh, you had a communications down there. Forgot that? You know, that wasn't our fault, Todd. And I don't like to have things made without our planning board knowing about it. So I can't, I stood up with that board, and I will too, too, because they did their job.
That's right. As mayor, I would have not let that happen. And that's where it starts, at the top. The mayor appoints all these boards, it starts at the top. We don't have to get ugly. We don't have to get ugly. And I'm not saying that was right. Was the decision that came out right? That's fine. Did we have to go through all the negativity to get there? No, we did not. And that's what leadership is about. And we need somebody to do that and change that. That's what I want to do.
Justice aside, it still fits in with if you and your neighbors and your coworker are out here being involved, this kind of stuff doesn't happen. When you end up with a board that's had the same members on it for the last twenty years, they get set in a certain way of doing things. But you can't put any other members in if there's nobody standing up saying, "I'll do it." Anytime you get a chance to change board members, council members, mayor, in my life, you're supposed to change them. The mayor's job is not supposed to be fun. The council member's job is not supposed to be fun. None of them are. They're supposed to be an obligation that you feel you have to accept in order to pay your community back for the life you've lived in here. None of them are supposed to be fun, but they're all supposed to work together. And if we don't have all the citizens out here taking the responsibility and not just the benefits, then the city's not gonna work. We have good people here. I will not say a bad word about any council member. I will not say a bad word about mayor. As far as I can tell, with what they've got to work with, the city management here is doing a fine job. The whole problem is the community. City managers can't do anything without your support. You can put me in as mayor, I can't do anything without your support. Everybody out there has to be involved. Every person in this city has a responsibility to this city. That's basic to the entire idea of our country. Where did we lose that? If you don't like what's happening, get up. Get out. Get busy. Get your responsibility. Now, I'm up here running for mayor. I think I can do a fine job. I don't have the training that Todd does. I don't have the training that Mary does. But the training I do have, that allows me to be confident when I tell you, "I fix things. When it's broken, I fix it." I'm good at that. I can help you do that. I can show you ways to do that. But it all starts with getting the community involved.
Is there anything else before we get to closing comments? Okay, let's start closing statements with David.
Well, I'll just reiterate that I do have some experience as city minister for eight years in the city of Marion. I understand the budget. I understand utility rates. I understand bond issues. And I have absolutely no intention of walking in a door and starting up or managing our staff. That's not my job. But my staff that I'll have if I'm elected and I am on a council needs to bring me information to make an intelligent decision. I will be able to do that. I can look at it, and I think I can decipher it, and I could possibly help some of the other council members who don't have as much experience in that area understand why we do things some ways that we do it. My goal is to make the best decisions for the majority of the citizens of Maryland, not just the few. I don't believe in that. I think that if we're gonna make a decision that's gonna affect everybody's pocketbook, then it needs to have the best interest of the majority involved in that. I really want to make Marion a place that's better off than when we all came here tonight. And I hope we can all do that. We'll have to work together to do it. That five years down the road we're talking about, we're gonna have to look hard at that. And that's something I would intend to do. I have four years to do it, so maybe we can get it done in four years.
I have no experience. I've never done anything like this before. I'm not into politics. Other than high school government class, I don't have a background in government either. What brings me here today is just my love for this city. I wanna see it do better things than what's been done. I wanna help it grow, and I wanna make the appropriate decisions for the citizens that I think need to be done. And I can do that. Thanks.
Couple things, cooperation and planning are good for me. That's one of the, two of the things I'm really interested in. And it all comes back to, and I share this with Melissa for sure, I'm only up here because I love this community. I have a lot of other things that I have to do with the time that I have in my life. But I truly believe that we're put here for a purpose, and like I said, we've made this home. And I think the potential is great here. I enjoy working with people. I love government. I love history. And I just look forward to putting myself to use for the people in this community, because, you know, I just feel that we owe it. We owe it to ourselves. We owe it to this town. And I know for sure I owe it to my daughter to try to give her somewhere to come back to and call home for as long as she chooses to do that. And I work with the kids in this community all the time, and this place has done a great job of raising good people. And I, for myself, I heard a comment earlier that this place, it's not welcoming here. I have felt, from the first day that I walked in this town, I've been welcomed. Maybe I'm different, but that's the way I've felt. I've never ran into a situation to where I felt that someone didn't want me here. And I just look forward to trying to move us forward. And like I said, it's important to me that we don't forget about where Marion came from as well, as we go forward. But I think there's room for both of those things to happen, so, thank you.
I'm running for mayor. I appreciate your support. I am for change. I ran for city council because of change and what I saw needed to be fixed. For the future, not for Todd Heitman, not for Central National Bank, but for the future of Marion. That's why I'm here. I think I have the talents and the skills and the belief system. I have a vision. And certain things aren't acceptable to me, and that's why I'm running. And we need to change the face of Marion. That's why I'm running.
I wanna thank Marion Record for sponsoring our forum today, and I'd like to thank all of you that did come out here on such a beautiful sunny day that we had here in Kansas. And we'll wait fifteen minutes, and maybe it'll be even worse. But anyway, I have enjoyed the afternoon, and we'll enjoy talking to anybody that would like to have anybody talk to me. And we'll listen, and we'll continue to listen.
I think the best thing that we can take out all this, Todd just said, we need to change the face of Marion. Now, before he said that, it started to come out, America. I think that's something everybody's forgot. America has the same problems that we have. Every county in America has the same problems that we have. It's all the same problem. People don't want to get involved anymore. You cannot have a government of the people, by the people, and for the people if the people don't come out and work at it. So yes, we need to change the face of Marion, and possibly that will start changing the face of America. I'm up here, yes, I think I can be a mayor. I may not be the best guy up here. Chances are, I'm not. But I'm up here to make you aware that there are changes that need to be made, and these changes can't be made without every one of you helping. Make no mistake. It does not matter who you put in office. If you're not out here helping, nothing's gonna change. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. Thank you for the candidates. We still have some coffee and cookies in the bag if you want to stick around and talk to the candidates about any specific issues. County clerk's office is still here if anybody needs to register to vote. Thank you all, and have a wonderful evening.